Morning and welcome to the Tuesday, October 24th meeting. If you'd stand for the pledge, please.
... of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation of God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
(cough) Excuse me.
Welcome to the county commission meeting. I remind you to silence your cellphones if you would please. Meeting documents are next to Commissioner Bender if you'd like those. And if you need a listening device, Carol or Craig would be able to help you with that. With that, we'll go to routine business. Item one is to consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion on a second to approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item two is to approve the commission minutes from October 17th.
Motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
Motion on a second to approve those minutes. Any changes, corrections? If not, those in favor of approval say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item three is bills to be paid of a million eighty-eight thousand two hundred and seventy-three dollars and seventy-five cents.
Pay the bills.
Second.
Motion on a second. Any comments?
Good morning.
Bob Litz.
Good morning, Commissioner. Bob Litz from the Auditor's Office. And at the behest of Commissioner Barth, I wanted to point out some, what I would call anomalies to the bills that have raised that number up quite a bit. First item I want to bring attention to is there was a highway payment for ninety-one thousand five hundred and eighty-two dollars that was for a bridge, and that comes out of the highway fund. There was another payment for a hundred and ninety-four thousand ninety-six dollars, and that is for the museum archives project, and it comes from funds that have been set aside for that. The other big ticket was our parking that we purchased across the street. This is a partial. It is for basically the lots that are in conjunction with the key building, and that check was written off for three hundred and forty thousand and seven hundred and four dollars, and that is for our jail expansion project. And that is my understanding at this point that we will be putting in for reimbursement out of the bond proceeds for that payment. There's one more piece of property over there that we still have yet to purchase to complete the parking plots. The other big ticket item, that was patrol cars. If you added all six of them up, it'd come to a hundred and seventy-six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars that come out of the sheriff's budget. And if you add up all four of those, it's eight hundred and two thousand, six hundred and thirty-two dollars. You subtract that from the one million eighty-eight, two hundred and seventy-four thousand, that drops her down to two hundred and eighty-five thousand, six hundred and forty-two dollars, which seems a little bit more in line with what we'd like to see. Any questions?
Any questions? Commissioner Hagerger?
I was just gonna make additional comment. I also called Bob or emailed Bob on the two that were under the Court Services office that were, I believe you told me psychosexual evaluations, where we're looking at competency evaluations and the cost of those. And these two, one was for over three thousand, well, both of them were for over three thousand dollars, and it doesn't look like either of those will qualify for reimbursement under the new House Bill 1183.
Any other questions about the bills? Not, we have a motion on a second to approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Item four, reports, a register of deeds, official statement of revenue collected in September's filed. And item five, personnel action. Item A is to consider a motion to approve routine personnel action.
So moved.
Second.
Motion on a second to approve routine personnel. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. There's no applications for abatement, no notices and requests, no planning and zoning notices, or petition for compromise. Before we get to the opportunity for public comment, last week we talked about the animal control ordinance, and we said that we would take public comment this week, or next week, when the item appears on the agenda. And that's not on the agenda, but there may be people here today that want to make comment about that ordinance in particular, and we don't want you to have to come back. So if you're here to talk about that, we would take public comment this week, and then obviously we record it for the following conversation. Is there anybody here that was going to do that? Okay, good. Just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that. Any other opportunity for public comment? Be happy to hear those comments.
Good morning. Bob Litz from the Auditor's Office again, and I wanted to inform this body that on November 1st at 10 o'clock, we are going to be doing a ratings call with Moody's Ratings. Frank Mamo from New York is gonna be the analyst that will do that. It will be held in the Auditor's Office, and if, I've also asked Frank for a list of any questions he might have that we can answer beforehand, or answer at the meeting, and I'd also let this body know that we have been diligent in providing information on our Emma website, as well as directly to them, anything concerning our budgets and economic information that the county, that they might find pertinent. So I would welcome you if you want to sit in on that call. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Lieutenant?
Where am I supposed to step in now?
Absolutely. We're here to...
Jason Gierman with the Minnehaw County Sheriff's Office Investigations Division. I'm here to discuss briefly about our liquor compliance checks. Now, basically, I can answer questions in general terms, so if you have any, go ahead and interrupt. I'll just go over the basic process of what we go through. So what we do is, we try and do these compliance checks twice a year, usually in the spring and in the fall, depending on what we have going on. We try to get an informant that's over the age of eighteen, and we use that informant's ID. We go with detectives, and we attempt to buy alcohol using the ID from the informant. If they purchase the alcohol, we go into the store and inform the person that sold the alcohol, that they just sold to a minor, and a citation is issued. And the reason that we use the person that's over eighteen is so we can do a citation, we don't have to take people to jail. And I've, you know, been on the media with this, and we're not trying to trick people. We're not, you know, we're just trying to get compliance with this. So if somebody fails the compliance check, basically our first notification is to the city of where it happened. So we'll call the city and say, hey, this business failed, so, you know, the city is now, it's up to the city now to deal with that within their means. The Department of Revenue has been notified, and what we do is we send our reports to the Department of Revenue. And they have like a tiered fine system. So the Department of Revenue also offers an online training program through their website, and if the store employee that sold had used the online program, it's my understanding that it's a five hundred dollar fine the first offense. If they haven't went through the training program, it could jump up to a thousand dollar fine. Second offense would be a thousand dollar, two thousand dollar, that's a tiered, depending on if they've had the training or haven't had the training. And then third offense, it could be a thousand, two thousand, I'm sorry, second offense, third offense, it could be suspended up for fourteen, up to fourteen days. And then that is only good for two years. So once the two years is over, they're wiped fresh, and it starts all over again. If you have questions, I can answer in general terms. I can't speak to each individual case, but...
Commissioner Karski?
Yes, sir. Thank you. The Sheriff's Office is doing these compliance checks because these municipalities don't have police departments. Is that correct?
Yes, we have Dunham and Brandon too, as a courtesy, and then Brandon, the city will take over that.
Okay. So, I mean, it's up to each one of those towns councils, city councils or city commissions, whatever they have, to renew the liquor licenses. How are they informed of the...
We inform them by phone call.
By phone call? You let the administration of that town know?
And I think it's generally, generally, you know, the citation would go under a city. It may be prosecuted by the county, I don't know, but they're notified of that. Maybe the city attorney would take that over in court as a city violation.
I think you did, what was it, forty-nine of them total? Was that...
Well, in July, we had eight failures, and we had seven here just recently.
Eight out of like sixty-some, if I remember?
Eight out of sixty-two, and I think we did...
Seven out of forty-nine this last time?
Something like that. I've got it here somewhere.
That's about one in every seven, or about fifteen, thirteen, fourteen percent are consistently failing.
I went back to 2014, and we had, where we did like thirty-three or thirty-four, and got two failures, and we also had a couple that, you know, we had zero. So it generally depends if we do in that thirty or forty range, you know, obviously we get fewer failures. We jump, start doing fifty or sixty, then we tend to get more failures. So your percentage is probably accurate.
Other, Commissioner Barth?
I really appreciate Captain Gierman coming in on this, and, you know, it's really been a stunning change, in my opinion, the difference between a few years back and today. I can't remember this kind of number coming in before. Apparently, it's pretty darn easy for underage people to purchase alcohol in our county, and I don't know if the attitude towards underage drinking is changing. Certainly, our sheriff has had some horrible experiences on that kind of an issue. And, you know, estimates are that between twenty and twenty-five percent of all liquor is consumed by underage people, twenty to twenty-five percent. Perhaps if we required these shops to turn over twenty percent of their revenue, they might get the message. But apparently, what's going on now doesn't affect them at all. I remember some years back when we suspended a license for a business, and then the legislature took away the power of the county commission to do that, and so now it has to go to the Department of Revenue, blah, blah, blah. It seems to me that a quick action on people on the scene is probably the best solution, and they've taken that option away from us. Somehow, we have to get the message out that this needs to stop. And I would say that the one business in Del Rapids is a recipient of TIF financing for their business. And, you know, wow, we're subsidizing them selling liquor to kids. It could be construed. I know that in most cases, the businesses don't intend for this to happen, but, you know, the clerk faced with the cutest cheerleader in school coming in, probably says, okay, I'll sell it to you. Or maybe it's the quarterback and the cheerleader, I don't know. We just have to stop this from happening. And, you know, too many times, I'm sure, Captain, you've seen accidents in the country where kids under the influence have ruined their lives. Thank you.
Other comments?
One thing I would add is that most of the people actually looked at the ID. And if you ever get an opportunity, look at a, get a look at an ID that's under twenty-one, and as soon as you look at it, you're gonna, it's gonna, yeah, it's vertical, it's not horizontal like the normal ones, and it says under twenty-one on it. So it's just not knowing what you're looking at, and it's, we're gonna start doing some education on the Sheriff's Office and with these businesses also, so...
Commissioner?
Did you happen to look back how many of these people are, these businesses have been repeat offenders? What's incidents of repeat?
The one in Hartford, Char D., it's called, Char, C-H-A-R apostrophe D., they failed in July also.
Wow. Any other comments? Frankly, I know it's frustrating for the Sheriff's Department, and it's frustrating for us, because we're somewhat having our hands tied, but this really has to be taken seriously, as has been suggested, because the excuses that we hear and the reason for not passing is hard to imagine sometimes. I know some people get in a hurry, but this could be a life or death kind of issue. And to sell liquor to an underage individual is just not acceptable.
We're not trying to trick them, but I guarantee a lot of the people that are trying to go by underage are trying to trick them, so...
Well, we appreciate your diligence in continuing to get this straightened out, because frankly, we'll do whatever we can to support you, but in some cases, we feel like we're tied with what we have to live with, and that's, I'm not suggesting that we're comfortable with that by any means.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. We appreciate it. Any other opportunities for public comment this morning? We'd be happy to hear from you. Any other opportunities? If not, we will go to item number ten, which is a public hearing to consider an application for a special event on sale liquor license for Prairie Pasta Inc. for an event on December 8th at the Blue Haven Barn. Olivia?
Yes. As you said, this is for an event at the Blue Haven Barn. It's a corporate event taking place on December 8th, and I have not received any concerns or objections from the Sheriff's Department, State's Attorney's Office, or Planning Department.
Any public comments about this license? We'd be happy to hear from you now also. Any public comment? If not, is there a motion, Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion, and then I'd have a comment. I'd make a motion to approve.
Second.
A second? Go ahead, Commissioner.
It's a little odd to have this juxtaposed with what we just discussed, but Blue Haven Barn has apparently been responsible to this point, and I certainly do appreciate the responsible members of our business community.
Thank you. We have a motion on a second to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item eleven is a public hearing to consider a motion to declare property legally described as written in Split Rock Township a public nuisance and enact South Dakota codified law twenty-one dash ten dash six. Mr. Hookman.
Good morning, Kevin. Kevin Hookman, County Planning Department. As you just heard, this is a public nuisance case to consider this property. The property owner is Cheryl Engel, and the address of the property is seven zero zero one East Twenty-Sixth Street. Staff received a complaint about this property late last fall, about a burned-out house. The house has been removed since that time. And then since then, we received additional complaints about the cars being parked on the property that are unlicensed. Staff waited a little while after the burned-out house to see if there was a reason why the cars were there, and then sent the first letter to the property owner on May 5th, 2017, for the, to abate the nuisance of unlicensed vehicles. There's the location of the property. Several letters have been sent to the property owner notifying them of the nuisance, notifying them of the ordinance and what needs to be done. I have had contact with somebody from, presumably from the property, that said that they were gonna take care of it, and nothing, some changes did happen, but then more cars came back before the nuisance was completely abated. And I'll show you some pictures to kind of go through what I saw. This is from the first site visit. You'll see a couple of cars there, at least from the screen I can see. It's, one car's really dark. And then, as we go through the year, earlier, later in the spring, the cars have not moved. One has moved in this picture, and the one car that remained appeared to be licensed at the time, if you zoom in close. But there's one car in the back that I haven't shown you yet. Then continued through the summer, and then more recently, later in the summer, more vehicles have appeared on the property, despite the letters that have been sent to the property owner. And this is the most recent picture, site visit after the final letter. Those three cars are still there. On the other side of the property, there was this particular car that was noted as part of the complaint. And as we move through, it's harder to take pictures of the car that that house came up. You can see that it's an old-style license plate. And then the most recent picture, there was another car, and I wasn't able to confirm if that car was licensed or not, but, yeah. And then the rest of the yard, throughout the summer, the complaint kind of also added other debris in the yard that became more apparent as the summer went along, some tree branches. And then in July, you could see the debris in the yard, and some weeds growing up on the left side there, that never changed throughout the summer. Oops, that's the end of it. So that is the complaint. The Minnehaw County nuisance ordinance does consider unlicensed vehicles and inoperable vehicles, excuse me, and to be considered abandoned property that's as part of the public nuisance violation. That also includes in the nuisance violation, junk and debris and weeds as well, and tall grass. The South Dakota codified law does allow Minnehaw County to declare a public nuisance and to allow the county to clean up the property and defray the costs to the property owner. And Planning and Zoning Department requests the Minnehaw County Commission declare the property legally described as written a public nuisance, and I can take any questions.
Thank you, Kevin. Does anyone have any questions at this point of Kevin? Commissioner Hagerger?
What would the cleanup entail if we did go that direction?
The cleanup would entail cleaning up the debris, as you see here, like if there's tree branches, or if there's any garbage that remains, and the removal of any unlicensed vehicles. If the vehicle does have a proper license, it can remain on the property.
Oh, right. Question, sorry, follow-up. Was the garage that that vehicle is sitting in front of, does that garage belong to the property owner?
Yes.
And the building that was being built on four-six that is not the property owners?
No.
But the garage is, so...
The garage is, yeah.
They'll get to you.
Commissioner Bender?
Did you receive any follow-up communication from the property owners after that first call?
I have not, no.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Commissioner Barth, questions?
Kevin, if the building, if the cars were still unlicensed but in a building, that would be legal, right?
Correct. They can take, put the unlicensed vehicles in and close building, and they could stay on the property.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Commissioners? Commissioner Karski?
Okay. So, the vehicles, if we take possession of those, are they, you know, basically delivered to a salvage yard, and what's the disposition of that type of stuff?
Sure. My understanding is that they are impounded by the company we called to take them, in which case, they'll go through the general impound where they notify the owner of the vehicle, and they have to come and show the, what they need to show to take, get it out of impound, if not, it becomes their vehicles, from my understanding.
They become...
It becomes the company's vehicle that impounded them.
I noticed that the mail was sent to the address of the property, but there's no residence there. Is that correct?
That is correct. The, the letter, or the address has not changed for where to contact. I have no further address to send it to.
Okay. So, but we know they received it, or do we...
We, I am aware that they received at least one, because they contacted me back.
Okay, okay. Is anybody living out on this property?
Not that I know of. We have, I have received another phone call more recently that has explained, or came with that concern that somebody may be living in the garage, which is also a violation of the ordinance, but I have not seen anybody living there.
Good. Thank you.
Any other questions for Kevin? This is a public hearing, so if the property owner is in attendance, we would be happy to hear from them. They need to come to the microphone and identify themselves, please. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
We'll need to pull it down a little bit so we can hear you. Thank you.
My name is Cheryl Engel. I do own the property, and I did have a fire, and it was a complete loss. The garage at the back that he has indicated with pictures, why he didn't take pictures of the litter the day he was there to take the picture of the cars, I don't know, that litter has been taken care of. There is a large, they pulled up, when they demolished the house, they pulled up the root system of a twenty-year-old bush that I have not been able to move myself physically yet. I have got, the house is now gonna begin being built within the next couple of weeks. He's told me that for the last couple of weeks, but the weather wasn't real nice. So I have hired a contractor to build the home. My garage is full of things that I did not lose in the fire, so I don't have room for the one car that, I do have licenses proof of for the Cavalier. I have now licensed that. That is the teal-colored car, twenty-five-year-old Cavalier. I have got a temporary license for, from motor vehicle for the Taurus, that is the blue car. The green car that is halfway out in the property, that car will be moved by noon today. He's coming out noon to get his car. It does not belong to me. It belongs to my daughter. So I do have proof of registration and licensing of two of the vehicles. I have got one vehicle that the key was demolished and all the paperwork in the fire, and so I have to, I didn't realize this, but I have to go to release record information to get the title released into my name so that I can have a key made, so I can move it. It's a drivable car. It just, I lost the key in the fire. Other than that, the complaints keep coming from the man behind me with the privacy fence. He's had an issue with me, I think. I've lived there twenty-five years, and I've never had a phone call about anything, any issues, ever. I've got property next door to me where she's got a car that's been sitting there for a year or two. Nobody says anything about that one. I mean, the man has no visible, visible line of proof of any of this, unless he trespassed on my property, which I have told him, he is not welcome to be on my property. His privacy fence was put right on my property line. He can't even come to the other side of his fence. It is on my property. So he is, if you guys want to look it up in your books, he is a chronic caller from every house he's ever owned. I've heard various complaints from other people. As I said, the debris, while he was there taking the most recent picture, yes, the cars have not moved, but they will be, the two are now licensed, the one will be moved, and the other one, I have got the information here of where I am dealing with getting the title released into my name so that I can have a key made, so I can move that vehicle. I don't have room inside the garage at this time, but I do foresee by the time, you know, the house is built, and my builder told me the most it's ever taken him, in lieu of bad weather, has been about two months, to get the house, start to finish, complete it. So, you know, at that time, I will have room in my garage to push that one in, but it is full of the various things that I've been able to save from, and the things that were donated to me that I didn't have room for at my apartment. Are there any questions?
Uh, go ahead. I'll wait.
I just, I'm curious why you've got your first letter in June, and you're just finally getting, I mean, these things taken care of.
To be honest with you, I'm having a real issue with anxiety and depression. So, for me to be out at the property has been real difficult, and I have to go to the property each time to get my mail. I stay with my daughter, and I apologize. I'm not trying to not deal with it. Two months ago, I was moving from my apartment that the insurance rented for me, and I went down the stairs and had a bilateral break. I broke both my feet. So I have been in the process of healing that, and I have not worked now for about two and a half months because of the severity of the breaks, and my job was on my feet eight hours a day, so I have not been able to return back to work yet. I haven't gotten a doctor's slip.
Cheryl, we're sorry. You don't have to feel anything about expressing yourself, because we understand your situation, and frankly, I, no, that's fine. We understand. Dealing with this kind of thing is not comfortable for us either, but we want to make sure that we hear both sides of the story before we decide what we need to do. Do you know when the title for the car will be quote "released" to you so that you can move that?
From what I'm understanding, it does, it's a process that takes...
Sir, if you come forward and speak, you need to identify yourself too, please.
Yes, Mr. Sebring, under purchase of...
I'm sorry, you need to identify yourself too.
Oh, Valdo Williams.
Okay.
And the vehicle that, that's a request by the garage is in the process of going through motor vehicle. We have to transfer the title. I was in purchase of buying the vehicle, and it's owned by Dakota Title Own, the person that still owns on the vehicle. I was gonna purchase it in Vermillion, and some title situation, they're gonna have the cops in the office there, down at Dakota Title Own. But, yeah, it's just, it takes about thirty, forty-five days, from what I'm told, and...
So you're thinking in six weeks, that title will be in your possession, so you're...
It should be. At the same time, that... It, it should be. At the same time downstairs, they say it can be within PBT, some type DDT form or something. It could take up to six months as well, but it's a form that I have to go through, which I'm filing today in order to receive the title. It's been on storage, and we had it stored for so long, and I did work on the car. It hasn't been, it hasn't come guided, so I want to transfer the title and get the title in my name.
Thank you for the explanation, Cheryl. Can I ask you one more question, if I might? You obviously are rebuilding. Have you taken out a building permit and all that kind of stuff that shows that you've done that, so we can?
That will be taken care of by my, by my builder, and it is Landon Greenfield Construction is the name of my builder. And we have gone through everything. He's got the plans. He's, he was getting permits last week. So, I haven't seen the locating flags come out yet, so I know that as soon as that happens, the house has been demolished and the basement is in, but he will still need to get located. So, that will tell me that he's within two days of coming out to begin skid, skidding, you know, and at that time, I will ask him to help me move that root system. I mean, it's unbelievable. It'd take me hours to get out there with my sawzall.
No. No comment? Did that this weekend? Got some bandages to prove it. Any other questions for Cheryl or from her?
Velder.
Situation? Commissioner Karski?
There's no laws about how many vehicles you can or can't own, but how many vehicles do you have?
I own two.
Okay.
Velder owns one, and he's in the process of getting the second one to fix and resell.
You know, the concern is we don't want rural residential properties to become salvage yards, obviously, and that's why we're having this discussion today, and to see that you're taking care of things, you know,
I appreciate that.
It's a very positive step, so, but I was just curious, you know, why there's so many vehicles out there and that haven't been moved, and, and you've, I think, done a sufficient job of answering that question, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Heiburger?
I would just say, Cheryl, I am very sorry for how this has all come about, and it's very stressful for you. You not only lost your house, but you've got your neighbors picking on you, and I am very sorry for what has happened. I would move that we would dismiss this with just a checkup in probably two months, just to see how they're coming with the, with the title of the one vehicle, and hopefully, things will start moving forward.
Thank you.
I don't know if I'll get a second. Jean's got a comment.
I'd have a question. I have a couple more questions.
Certainly. Go ahead.
And I think we need to have, have given opportunity for the other side
Correct.
before we can move forward. And my question is for Kevin, so I don't know if Kevin can come back up? And I'm wondering if you can confirm that when you were last out there, that all the additional shrub or bushes and other paraphernalia had been removed as, as indicated by the property owner?
I can't recall, and unfortunately, I did not take a picture, so I can't confirm if the, the, the weeds and the Pepsi can full of, of stuff is there, so I couldn't tell you right now.
How long ago was that, that you were out there?
That was October 2nd, I believe, was that site visit.
Can I ask a follow-up question to that, Commissioner?
Are you done, Commissioner Bender? I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
All right, this is as much for Cheryl as it is for Kevin. You don't go on the property when you do this because you have not received permission, correct?
Correct.
So, I guess my question of Cheryl, and I don't know if this is appropriate or not, so if legal counsel tells me to not ask that question, I will. But would you give in sixty days permission for Kevin to come out onto your property and, and look at the progress that you're being made?
It's completely wide open anyway. It's an acre and a third, and those cars right there aren't visible. He had to have zoomed in to even get that picture. It's on the backside of the acres. It's right up against the guy that, the privacy fence is the man who keeps calling, and he will continue to call. He does not like me. I've told him he can't come on my property. How he even knows those cars aren't licensed? I believe he infringed on my privacy.
Commissioner Bender?
Well, Cheryl, I live real close to you, and I, I've driven by your property a couple of times. I can see the car when I drive by on the road. I, I'm curious why you park them back there so far when you've got driveway and a, and a garage? I mean, why, why do you choose to park them right up against this neighbor's backyard fence?
Actually, for that reason, it's not visible. I mean, you would have to be really looking hard to look for those cars. You would have to intentionally be looking.
Cheryl, I'm sorry. Would you use the microphone because we have to make sure it's recorded?
Okay, and, yeah, that, it is not real visible. Actually, they're the most practical place. The driveway that you're looking at right now does, goes behind my fifty-year-old trees to the driveway that goes along, not his, well, not along his fence line, but we have to pull in behind that whatever car that, the green car that's my daughter's, and we'd have to pull around that to get into it. And in all reality, it's, it's out of the way and out of the most visible sight for anyone, except for me. It is on my property, though.
Maybe we could just point to where those cars are at.
You bet. Yeah, it's going to be back, that very back, back corner. It'd be the, the south corner. That's twenty-six, so it's going to be in this southeast, southwest corner of my property, the very edge. I've still got the property pin up, and I made sure when I parked my cars that that was out of the way, plus for mowing and stuff, and, and it has been mowed. I did get out there and mow it. It's been mowed, so the only weeds that are around are around the hole. I couldn't get close enough to the, the hole for the basement without being dangerous. So, I, I, there's, that's all that's around there. He can come out and take pictures if he needs to, but, you know, like I said, it's, it was the most out of the way and out of visibility that I could make it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Kevin or for Cheryl at this point? As Commissioner Bender said, this is a public hearing, so if there's anyone else who would like to speak either for or against this conversation, if you will, we'd be happy to hear from you.
Can I ask one question?
Absolutely.
What are my legal obligations? I would like to file harassment against this neighbor.
Uh, we don't give legal...
Well, would I go through the county commission?
I, I'd let you talk to your own attorney about that, please, if you would.
Because the white car that you saw in the pictures that he said he didn't know, that was my grandson, and he was out there working on the vehicles, and the two times he came out to help me, he was, the sheriff's department was called by this man. He would say, "Peepe kids are there, and they shouldn't be there." It's broad daylight. He's in my driveway. He's in and out of my garage, and, and he's, every, the two times that he was out there, this man called the sheriff's department. It's just every single thing, every single time he has a chance.
I understand your frustration, but unfortunately, I'm
Thank you.
not an attorney, nor would I be able to represent you.
Thank you.
I could. Any other questions? Anybody else like to make public comment about this particular issue? If not, we had some conversation about a motion.
Motion to dismiss with Kevin checking back up in, can we do it that way?
To dismiss or delay?
Why don't we delay? I'd prefer to delay for sixty days.
Motion to delay and recheck in, in eight weeks. Does that sound reasonable?
Is there a second to that motion?
I have a second.
I think it should be longer than eight weeks, Mr. Chairman. I, I think that we should go back in May.
Well, any other comments? Commissioner Karski?
You know, I'm, I'm comfortable with eight weeks simply because if, you know, if there's going to be construction and stuff going on, there's, it's going to be, and maybe it's a good reason to delay even longer, but if there's going to be construction going on, it, it should be pretty well evident that things are moving along. But at that point, after construction's done, I guess we'll see again if there's further developments, but I, I think eight weeks gives the time to make, make the progress that needs to be done.
Commissioner Heiburger?
I would also say that in eight weeks, we can check. It doesn't mean we're going to file, you know, to, to move on. I think we just need to have a check in eight weeks and see what's going on, and it could still be delayed till May if we need to because of the weather.
And I frankly don't want you to have to go all through this whole process again of if we dismiss it, we'd have to start all over from scratch, go through all the process we've been through to this point. If we delay it, and in six, eight weeks, we see progress, I'm pretty sure that we're going to be very happy with that progress, and it'll send a message to the neighborhood that you are making some changes, and you're trying to do the best you can with what you can afford to do at this point. And frankly, I'm sorry you've had to go through all of this stuff and the issues that you've had since then, but unfortunately, our job is to live with the law of the land, so to speak, so I hope you understand that. But I think we all feel like this is the correct way to do it for now, and if you show progress in eight weeks, I, I think we'll be able to move past this.
Thank you.
Is there any other comments?
I would just say, Ms. Angle, that you did a, a great job of representing yourself, and it's not very easy to come up and speak in front of a group like this, and you did an effective job, and so you're in good shape.
We have a motion and a second to delay for progress report for eight weeks. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passed. We'll see you or hear from you in eight weeks or hear from our planning staff.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Item twelve is also a public hearing to consider a motion to declare property legally described as written in Lyons Township a public nuisance in an act, South Dakota codified law twenty-one dash ten dash six. Mr. Hookman?
Yes, Kevin Hookman, County Planning Department again. As you just noted, this is also a public nuisance. And we'll get the map up as soon as we can. This location is in Lyons. It's along Fifth Street on the south side of Lyons. This his, this property does have a history of complaints, non-compliance in the past. Two years ago, the property was declared a public nuisance and largely cleaned up. Here's the location on the south side of the property. The cleanup took place, and a few vehicles were left behind as they were licensed at that time, two years ago. This year, this summer, staff received another complaint that there is weeds growing, another kind of a junk pile going, and that the vehicles were not licensed. Staff sent the first letter on July 7th of two thousand seventeen, as, and visited the site in that time. Several letters were, were sent to this property owner. No contact has been made from the property owner to staff. Final letter was sent on September 7th for the property, and no changes were made at that time, and notice was sent of this meeting on October 5th. I'll go through the property pictures here. These vehicles, like I said, were not licensed the last time. And I can, excuse me, I can tell that they are not licensed as they do not have the newer plate styles yet. And moving forward through the year, you can see the tall grass. At one point, the grass was mowed, and through most of the property, but as you see, there is going to be a section that remained weedy and lots of branches. There's the most recent picture on October 2nd. And then there's, here's the branch pile with a tire there and some other debris. And although the, the site was largely mowed, we still have this debris pile here in the corner. And then this is some weeds on the east side of the property that have been died from the frost, I presume, so that would be the site photos. Same process, we can, staff asked to declare this property a public nuisance, so we can clean it up via the state law, South Dakota codified law twenty-one ten six. So, any questions?
Does anyone have any questions for Kevin at this time? Commissioner Karski?
I'll show what the property boundaries are in here. Is it the red lines? Is that the property boundary on that map? Because it looks like the white square would be, I'm just curious. Help me understand where...
Yeah, so this is the property boundary. Maybe I get that little laser out here. There's that building on the, on the north side of the property, and it was built an unknown time ago, and it may be encroaching in the right of way a little bit, as you can see by the property line. I've never went out there to look at the property line. It may be right on the property line. It'd be the other option. But then we have all the vehicles stacked in the middle. As you can see, there's four there, and then there's the pickup that's more difficult to see in this image.
So, the red, the red square is the property line?
Yes.
Other, Commissioner Heiburger?
Did we do out there when we cleaned up the property a few years ago? And, and my second question would be, all four of these vehicles or five, you don't believe are licensed? Can we do the, whatever?
Sure. A few years ago, the, what started the complaint was that there was a structure on the building, on the property that burned down, and inside the structure, there must have been barrels of who knows what inside of it. So, there was lots of barrels and debris scattered on the property from that fire. There were other barrels on the property that were not inside the building, that we had to test for what's inside of them and remove those off the property along with other debris. And if I recall right, we did remove two vehicles off the property that were not licensed, but these ones were. To my understanding, I don't see that they are licensed, or at least there's nothing on the vehicle showing that they are licensed on any of these.
Other questions? Commissioner Barth?
So, Kevin, there is no house on the property at this point?
Correct.
And have you had contact with the owner as he talked to you, called you up and said, "I'm going to get this taken care of"?
He has not.
Other question, excuse me, other questions for Kevin? Again, this is a public hearing. Is the owner of the property here? Is the owner of the property here? If not, is there anyone else who would like to make comments about this particular issue? And you, again, you need to identify yourself, even if we know who you are.
Good morning. I'm Justin Hackett. My property is basically to the east of that, the surrounding. I purchased this property from Mike Day around eleven years ago. His choice was to keep that small corner of the property for storage. He also ran a small business out of the building, which he doesn't do any longer. I've talked to Mike numerous times about the property. Usually, he's mowed about an average of one time a year, if I'm lucky. Weeds are four to five foot tall. The, the thistles that you saw, those are all sprayed. I'm constantly trying to take care of that property. The brush pile you see is a tree that fell off of his property onto mine, which I had to take care of, put it back onto his property. Numerous items, I mean, the vehicles are, they're just not worth anything. They, they sit there, just a public nuisance. I mean, I actually get to look out. My house is right there. I mean, that's what I look at every day, and again, I've spoke to him numerous times, tried to buy the property from him, just not able to do anything with it. I do have other photos, if you guys, anyone would like to see them.
If you wouldn't mind passing those, we'd be happy to see them, or if you can just put them on the screen, that's okay, too.
On the screen.
Yeah, if you want to put them on the screen, then everybody can, you don't have it?
Look at that.
Believe me, there's nobody up front here that knows how to run that screen, so.
Mr. Chairman, let me ask Mr. Hackett a question.
Oh, absolutely. Go ahead.
So, how often does he even come out there?
Very rare.
And when he does, does he bring more stuff, or?
Yeah, it depends on, there's been times, numerous things have been thrown into that yard, or they used to have a burn barrel there, which they brought garbage from Sioux Falls out. They'd burn it, leave boxes of old, he canned honey in the building, so there was boxes of old honey. He'd bring out and leave there, so of course, dogs and whatnot would come in, drag that stuff out.
Are you seeing other critters?
Yeah, there's definitely cats living in there now. Obviously, the building, like I said, when it doesn't get used, I can guarantee you there's mice and that, and that type of thing in there. I mean, it's just a, a lot of debris around it. The picture you're seeing here is, is an older picture from two thousand fifteen. That was shortly after there was the... that was shortly after there was the fire, um, that debris and the grass that you see, that, that's what you will normally see. Um, this is just a picture of his building, just the, there's, I've been inside the building one time, there's one room that he's using, uh, the rest is basically what you're seeing there. It's just a lot of debris and just garbage, so. The newer photos that we'll put up are of the vehicles, uh, still there. You can see the thistles, the patches of weeds. Um, the four vehicles you see there, there's three that are, I believe they're older vehicles he wanted to fix up to move the honey product, uh, and there's one old box. It's not even a vehicle, it's just a back end of a vehicle. He's got up on wood blocks. Um, let's see if Donley can find that. Yeah, we didn't, you can just see it, uh, through the swing sweat, the, the, the box to the right, uh, that is just an old box off of a, a vehicle he's got up on blocks. Um, there's also junk in between, old lift systems, um, a lot of debris. The view you're seeing is from my yard, looking into basically his, so that's what I get to look at each day.
I think we see the message. Commissioner Kersky?
Couple questions, and, um, I guess it'd be more for Kevin, if you don't mind. Um, are the taxes paid current on this property? Do we check that? They are?
Yes, they are.
Okay. The building, um, do we ever, I mean, I don't know what the building looks like, has anybody's, you know, been able to see inside of it? Are we ever, do we ever take condemnation procedures if it's a building that's unsafe, or, you know, can you tell me, tell me anything about that?
We haven't, um, and our, our ordinance that we have adopted and the process of the, how that works, uh, doesn't really work with our ordinance. So we haven't traditionally done condemnations for buildings, um, of any sort, so...
Other questions for Kevin?
I have a follow-up.
Commissioner Bender?
So Kevin, if, if we, if you, if we do decide to clean up this property, what will we do? Will we just take out the vehicles, the tire, any other debris?
Uh, yeah, and, and mow the, the property for that one time to make it compliance.
And then a lien is placed on the property?
Yes.
Commissioner Heiburger?
If, you know, the cars will be impounded. If they end up with any value when they're sold, does it go back onto their property tax bill?
Um, from my recollection, the last time, uh, we were, uh, Jim and Ron's, uh, we never received a bill from them, because they, that's, they pull it for their empowerment, and that's what they have for payment.
Right. But I think there's value of the vehicle, so Scott, what do you know?
Scott, you wanna identify yourself?
Scott Anderson, County Planning Director. I just need to correct a statement. It's not an assessment, I mean, it's not, it's the, uh, you ask if the lien was placed on the property. It's not a lien, it's an assessment. And that assessment is paid first before they have, before they pay their property taxes, so a lien, you can...
Thank you for the correction.
We do, we do get paid back, and so...
But Scott, the value of the vehicles?
The value of the vehicles typically, if, um, if there, if, if there's enough value in the vehicles to cover the work, there's not a charge. If, if, if the towing company charges us, that also goes against the assessment.
Okay.
Other questions for Kevin? Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak about this particular issue? We'd be happy to hear from them also.
Hi, I'm Paul Simmonsma. Um, I live, uh, uh, you wanna say downtown Lyons, because it's not very big, but I grew up in Lyons. I was, um, I've been there for forty-five years. Um, and we just recently had an influx of new babies being born, kids coming into Lyons. I mean, we just recently had eight kids coming into Lyons. And as you well know, in a small town, we have a park, but the peep kids don't play in the park, they go everywhere, and you're not gonna be able to watch those kids. And my concern is that the kids are gonna start playing around those vehicles. The kids are, that have recently moved into Lyons are of age, where they're gonna start walking around, and they're gonna start messing around with that stuff, and we don't need them in there. And the pictures they showed you of that building, the one picture, that's, that's filled all the way to the top of junk. I said, "There's nothing in that building that would be of value that I can see." And as long as I've lived there, that building's been there, and it's just gotten worse and worse. So that's my main concern, is the kids and the safety. I mean, it has to be cleaned up. And like Mr. Hackett has said, that if you clean the vehicles up and be able to mow that, he would mow it. He would keep the weeds down, you know? But leaving those vehicles have no value to anybody but him, I guess the owner, but it's a nuisance for us, so, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the gentlemen? Any other comments? No other comments?
Chairman, I'd make a motion to have the planning department immediately make arrangements to clean this property up, and I plan to, well, if I get a second, I'll go for that.
Yeah, we have a motion and a second. Go ahead, Mr. Barth.
Um, I also think that, uh, we may need to do some kind of assessment as to whether there are toxic chemicals and stuff stored there, and I'll talk to the fire department and, uh, emergency management about that.
Any other comments? Uh, Scott, would you like to?
I wanna make sure that we have it a correct motion, and that is to declare it a nuisance and to proceed with the cleanup.
That is my motion.
That's my second.
That's my correction. We have a motion and a second to declare this a nuisance. Any other comments? If not, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. We'll be out there shortly. Thank you for coming.
For coming.
Item number thirteen is county liaison reports. Commissioner Barth?
Mr. Chairman, uh, I, I did attend a fire chief's, uh, meeting out in Humboldt, and, uh, there were about twenty-eight people there. All the volunteer fire departments were there. The only ones, uh, that weren't there was the Sioux Falls Fire Department and the airport Fire Department. Uh, they sent representatives to the funeral of that fire chief and made a donation to the family there. I'm sorry to say this, but apparently, uh, the fire chief's, uh, wife had passed away just a couple of months prior to this. And so there are two daughters, I think in high school, who are now without either parent.
Wow.
Uh, and then I would say, last night, we had a, um, planning and zoning, uh, uh, meeting, and, uh, it was kind of a rough one, I would say. We had an overflow crowd, uh, people were sitting on the floor, people were in the overflow room, people were yelling, uh, comments from the crowd, and, uh, you know, there was applause and grunts of dissatisfaction when someone said something that they didn't agree with, and, uh, it was, uh, disappointing. But our facility here may not be big enough to handle this type of an event. And, uh, we, uh, the, the issue was a, uh, was a gravel pit, uh, northeast of the, uh, the water ski place, north of the airport, and it was unanimously defeated by the Sioux Falls and county planning, uh, departments. And, uh, since then, I've actually got cranky emails from people that are upset with me, even though I voted against it.
Welcome to the area of public service. Any other liaison reports? Commissioner Bender?
I don't know that this really counts as a liaison report, but it's through UDC that I was notified about it, and I just wanted to put a plug in for, there's a fundraiser on Thursday for Project Car at First Lutheran, where you get soup sandwiches and sweets, which is kind of a trifecta for me this time of year. Um, but they have lunch and dinner. Project Car is a great nonprofit organization that provides, um, safe transportation, uh, to folks who generally otherwise wouldn't be able to, to get around, so that's my plug.
It's an excellent program, and I will tell you that, uh, we have lots of clients who use that program, and I'll put the same plug in and verify that they do an awesome job. Commissioner Kersky?
Same thing, probably not as much a liaison report, but last, um, Thursday night, I was, um, I was asked some time ago to do the sleepovers, sleepout for the Bishop Dudley Hospitality House, so I, they had a very good program, and it's open to the public if anybody would ever like to, um, see it. Talks about the issue of homelessness in Sioux Falls, and yes, homeless people do exist in our community, uh, anywhere between, depending on which county you look at, um, seven hundred and seventeen hundred. So it's not an easy number to get a firm grip on, but there is a good number of people. Um, the volunteers at the Bishop Dudley House, you know, if people wanna know what can they do, if, if you can't give money, if you can volunteer, that's, that's just a fantastic organization. Um, I don't believe that the issue of homelessness is a solvable problem, um, because it's always going to exist, but it's, you know, comes back to us as a county commission, when, with indigent care and all sorts of other factors, so we do have to be maybe creative in our approach and how we, we work with people who are at probably the lowest point of their life. Um, and try to bring, or help bring them up, I guess, so. It's really a, an eye-opener, so if anybody else is ever asked to, um, do that sleepout, um, get a good night's sleep the night before, because you won't get a lot of sleep that night. Um, you do sleep outside on the, in a tent, in a cardboard box, but you are on the pavement, and, um, there's a lot of noise downtown all night long, so you just don't get a lot of sleep, so. But it does help create an awareness, and, you know, in my role as both the city councilor and a county commissioner, and very supportive of all the things that the Bishop Dudley House, Hospitality House does, and I'm just grateful that they're there to do the work that they do, so.
Thank you. Any other liaison reports? If not, any new business? Any old business? With that, I entertain a motion to go into executive session for contract conversation.
That's my motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go into exec session for contracts. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.